So, good evening, everyone. Today, welcome to the August 14th, 2020, meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. My name is Maggie Sharon, and I am calling this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. This open meeting is being conducted remotely via Zoom, consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020. Information on how to join school committee meetings and meeting agendas are always posted on the Dover Sherburne District website. And I do know that that was a question for some folks. And so, while typically it's also posted on a town website, our official posting location is the district website, and that's where you should go to look for the Zoom links as your first location. And just want to make sure folks knew about that. Also, as I mentioned, please note that this meeting is recorded, and that anything you broadcast will be captured by the recording. We're also aware, as I mentioned, that the Zoom account tonight has a capacity of 100 participants. Unfortunately, the larger capacity account was not available to us tonight, and we feel it's important that we hold this follow-up meeting as soon as possible in order to allay confusion and allow planning for everyone to continue as we make plans to reopen school. Please do share the information with anyone who can't join the meeting live. Let them know that it will be made available on Dover Sherburne Cable's YouTube channel as soon as possible following its conclusion. Also, I want to let you know that tonight, we are not holding community comments. We're doing this because truly, this meeting is a continuation of the meeting that we had regarding the vote on the hybrid reopening model. Sorry. And so, you know, we've had a pretty ample opportunity to hear from the community. Also, since that meeting, we've received, you know, many, many emails and calls and texts and communications. And so, we feel like, you know, we have all the information that we need in order to deliberate and vote tonight. So, dear members of our community, school, district leaders, educators, parents, and colleagues of the Dover Sherburne and regional school, of the Dover Sherburne Regional and Regional School Committees, thank you all for joining us here tonight. We appreciate your time this evening on a beautiful Friday night in the middle of August as we seek to achieve two goals with our meeting this evening, which we hope will be pretty brief. Later in the meeting, we're going to clarify our vote that was taken on Tuesday, which approved the district's proposal to bring, begin school in a hybrid model. We understand there was some confusion about that. We felt some ourselves, and we think it's important that we clarify that so that, moving forward, we're all on the same page. And first, though, we're going to take a little bit of time to share our thoughts and our understanding of the current dilemma that's currently facing our school system with you. So, on Tuesday night, district leadership presented the details as they currently exist, given the fluctuating state of an ongoing pandemic of the return, of our return-to-school plan. The presentation focused on the hybrid model, since it is being proposed as the model that we use to begin this school year. At the Regional School Committee, we are in agreement about the merits of the hybrid plan, given the current state of community health. We're pleased that this plan allows teachers and students to learn together, both at home and in school, rather than, say, the half-and-half plan that's common in many of our neighbor districts. The fact that our buildings have generous room sizes, healthy ventilation systems, and our continued commitment to keeping small class sizes is the reason that this plan works. And we're grateful to all the boards and all the school leaders, current and past, who've worked for so many years to allow us to enjoy the privilege of this hybrid plan. The plan allows for continuity of learning and teaching with teachers and students in a stable cohort. It gives opportunities for students to be in school for things that are best done in person, such as lab sessions or taking tests. It offers opportunities for teachers to work powerfully with students safely in a remote setting, using lessons that were learned this spring. All this can happen due to the dedication of our leadership and our committed faculty, and we're extremely grateful for all those who worked hard and have been working and continue to work hard to make returning to school safely and productively a reality. As the committee members reviewed the plans for each school, a specific concern arose. What can we do about teachers who, for a specific health or a family reason, can't return in person this fall? In the elementary and middle schools, the promise of a remote academy staffed by Dover Sherburne teachers solves some of these issues. We wondered what the pathway would be for a high school teacher in such a situation. We didn't see a clear path for them. Ms. Miller will speak in a moment about how her motion addresses these concerns, while also supporting our needs as parents and taxpayers. Before she speaks, I'd like to remind the community why it is an essential component of a safe and successful return to school this fall. On Tuesday, I asked whether hashtag #WeRDS is a true compact in our community, our common commitment to ensure that no person is left alone at lunch or teased for being unique. Over the past few years, it's been the focus of assemblies and guidance lessons and thousands of tweets. We've discussed how creating inclusive culture means to grow in our understanding of differences, learning differences, cultural differences, social differences, to become more aware and able to support one another's unique needs. We've come to understand equity and how it means that giving people what they need does not mean that everyone gets the same thing. Nowhere, I'm sorry, you might want to, you might want to mute your computer. We've come to understand equity and how it means that giving people what they need doesn't mean everyone always gets the same thing. Nowhere has this become more apparent than trying to open a school in a pandemic. Last spring, we came to understand that not all our students can learn equally well via remote learning. We heard on Tuesday night that it's going to be important to prioritize our students with the greatest needs for the most time in person, such as students with complex special needs or students who live at home in a very unsafe or unpredictable environment. This is absolutely true. It is also true that not all students can participate in hybrid or in-person learning during this time, and we're making arrangements for those students to have a dynamic and inclusive remote program that provides opportunities for them to interact virtually with their peers in home and at school. That's equity. And so, it's true for our educators. John Dioria, a local education leader and former principal and superintendent of various area school systems, speaks often about the fractal nature of schools. He explains that a fractal is a mathematical term that refers to a self-similar pattern, that is, an individual or small segment of the entire design resembles the whole. Nature abounds with fractals. He says broccoli's shape is a fractal. If you break off a little floret from a broccoli plant, it looks like a mini version of the entire part of the plant. He argues that schools are fractals. How our leaders, that's us, treat our teachers, so too will the teachers respond to their students. And this isn't just a school phenomenon. We see this in all manner of human interactions. Thus, we are determined that we must include our dedicated faculty as we examine learning models this year. Just as we expect to offer equity to our students based on what they need, we must respond to our educators, who have a clear and present need to work remotely. Now, I've been told by some people that this is crazy. You know, if you give folks an option, they're going to just take it, and then who's going to be left to teach the children? I reject this warning. Our teachers have worked side by side with administrators to craft these plans. They want to see our children in person. They want to teach. This amendment isn't giving everyone a menu of how they feel like working. It's offering equity. It's trusting our teachers to know what equity is and ask them to take only what they need, not just what they see that someone else gets. This isn't about winners and losing losers. This is about creating, as Dr. Kio eloquently describes, a true community of care. The catastrophe of COVID-19 has left every one of us in a state of grief. We grieve for those who are ill or dead. We grieve for missed vacations, milestones, celebrations. We grieve for children, our children, who've lost opportunities to make the team, perform in the show, go to college for that internship, or that once-in-a-lifetime trip. We grieve for lost jobs and uncertainty for all of our futures. Grief, as we know, has stages: anger, denial, bargaining, depression, maybe acceptance. Grief is messy. The stages aren't linear. Grief is ugly. It robs us of patience, grace, and empathy. If we're being honest with ourselves, we're all there. We must recognize this grief is in ourselves and in, also in one another. And we need to try to offer grace to others as we move towards accepting a new normal that none of us ever wanted. As we deliberate tonight, I hope that each of you listening will know that it is with complete dedication and love for our communities that each of us makes a vote tonight. It's with the deepest respect for each of you who have worked to plan for our school's safe and successful reopening. And we hope that we can all continue to work together to open our schools and live and teach and be with one another and community in the weeks to come. Thank you. Do I have any other members of the Regional School Committee who would like to make a statement? Judy Miller?
Maggie, you are a hard act to follow. Oops, that's not going to work. That was really lovely. Well, I've got to figure out how to hold my iPad. That was inspiring, Maggie. Thank you. I want to talk on a more sort of practical level. At the outset of this meeting, I'd like to clarify why I believe, from an educational as well as a humanistic standpoint, we attempted to incorporate the amendment I proposed into the hybrid model Dr. Kio presented. At our last meeting, we were tasked with determining whether to approve for the middle school and the high school Dr. Kio's recommendation that we begin school this fall under a hybrid model. In the run-up to that meeting, I spent countless hours on the reopening task force gathering information about the three models in order to make an informed decision. As I explained in my remarks on Tuesday night, the social and emotional needs of our students compelled me to support the hybrid model. At the same time, through my work on the reopening task force and my contacts with our teachers, I learned that a small number of teachers, due to medical issues primarily and childcare issues secondarily, might be unable to return to in-person teaching. In fact, the district's most recent survey of teachers revealed that the majority of our teachers intended to return to teaching in person if we chose to return under the hybrid model. Without intervention, the few teachers who cannot teach in person would be required to take a leave of absence, and in many cases, the district would be required, under federal law, to hold their jobs open during the first 12 weeks of their absence. At the same time, the district would be required to temporarily replace these teachers by hiring from the outside. Based upon the caliber of teachers we would need to hire to temporarily staff, to temporarily, I'm sorry, replace our staff on leave, and based on the current state of the job market for teachers in Massachusetts, I am convinced that it will be difficult, if not impossible, to replace teachers who need leave and to find replacements who are certified or even qualified to teach their courses. I base these statements regarding hiring on the following. First, for those of you who do not teach or have children at the high school, you need to know that we have a small school with small class size, and we offer an extremely broad array of classes, including classes such as AP Physics, AP Calculus, AP Chemistry. Due to our small size, we have several classes for which there is only a core cohort of 15 or 20 students taking those classes. These we call singleton classes. In a normal year, it is difficult to hire certified teachers in the math and science departments, much less, much less teachers who are certified to teach these singleton courses. This year, without the proposed amendment, we would be looking to hire those teachers, but offering only temporary employment, possibly only for a few weeks. If the numbers in Massachusetts get worse, and I can't tell you how sincerely hope we stay where we're at, and the Commonwealth decrees that everyone must teach remotely, our regular teachers will come off of leave and begin teaching these courses remotely, and the temporary teachers will be dismissed. I find it unlikely that any teacher worth their salt would be willing to give up a current stable position to teach at DS with the possibility of being terminated if and when we return to remote teaching. These assumptions are borne out by the fact that other districts, who are ahead of DS in this process, have had great difficulty finding qualified teachers to teach in their schools this year. Thus, from a purely educational perspective, we are faced with two choices. First, we can attempt to find replacements for all teachers whom, who we must permit to take leave if their medical or childcare circumstances make them unable to teach in person, when we know that that process will be next to impossible. Or, we can allow those teachers who cannot teach in person due to medical or childcare reasons to teach the in-person sections of their classes remotely, thus alleviating the need for leave. As I explained in our last meeting, I believe that, from an educational perspective, for the students at the high school, it is in the best interest of those students to learn remotely from those few excellent educators who cannot work in person due to their medical and childcare issues, rather than hire inferior teachers from outside the district and face the possibility that we may not even be able to do that. At our last meeting, I identified two other reasons that mitigate in favor of this approach. Some of the teachers who will need to take leave rather than teach in person will be entitled to use sick leave during their leave of absence. We will be required to pay the replacement teachers as well, thus increasing our costs during a time when our towns may not be able to shoulder the financial burden imposed by this pandemic. In addition, at our last meeting, I expressed my strong desire to listen to the needs of and support our teaching staff. I spoke clearly and at length at our meeting on Tuesday about our ethical and moral obligations, or at least my ethical and moral obligations, to our teachers, so I will not repeat myself. I would just conclude by saying that I attempted to craft an amendment to the hybrid model that provides the best possible education to our students, given the monumental constraints of this pandemic, while providing grace and community to our educators. Thank you, Maggie.
You're welcome. Do I have other members who would like to make a statement before we move to our vote? Lynn? You're okay? You're muted, Lynn.
I'm trying to access it anyway, because I wrote it down as well. I can't remember this stuff. Yeah, so I, I'd like to, you know, one, just completely agree with both you and both Judy and Maggie. I completely agree. So, each of us on the committee has read the volumes of emails from parents expressing diametrically opposed opinions on how to get our kids safely back to school, and that the remote is the only sensible option, that the all-in is the only sensible option, or that the hybrid is the only sensible option. And I've read emails, you know, admonishing us to do what's right for the children, advising us not to base our decision on irrational fears or emotion. But the fact of the matter is that reasonable minds can and do differ on how best to achieve our objective. You know, whether we agree with each other or not, you know, we know that this school committee has spent countless hours working to ensure that our decision is informed, evidence-based, and what each of us believes is in the best in short, best short and long-term interests of our school and our community. Over the last month, I became comfortable with the hybrid plan because the remote aspects of the plan became more robust and equitable for differently situated students. And as I said during Tuesday's meeting, this is a threshold issue for me because I can't vote in favor of a hybrid model that contemplates treating our teachers differently, replacing teachers with substitutes simply because those teachers are unable to deliver their lessons in person during a pandemic. Yes, having your teacher in your classroom is far superior to having those lessons delivered remotely. But I have a deep respect for the teachers and the parents who are unwilling or unable to take what they deem as an unacceptable risk of in-person learning in this matter of literally life and death. And the fact of the matter is that, based on surveys conducted last month, a number of our teachers will be unable to enter our building due to their own or a family member's heightened risk of dying if they contract COVID-19. And a number of our teachers won't be able to teach on-site because of COVID-related childcare issues. I think our amendment to the plan offers a better alternative to using substitutes to replace these teachers. Remote teaching is entirely possible. In fact, there are entire institutions established around the concept of remote instruction. No, it is not ideal in normal times. It would, and it would be unacceptable for our district. It's not ideal, but it's not, it would be unacceptable in our district in normal times, is what I'm trying to say. But we're in a crisis right now, and it's time to execute on the social contracts we've all entered with each other to make the best of this awful situation. Just as we need to trust one another to comply 100% with all safety protocols to keep our schools safe, we have to trust that our educators will continue to demonstrate the commitment, professionalism, and excellence they're known for, regardless of the setting they're in. We need to prepare ourselves for what may, what many believe is a certainty, a move to an all-remote education, where all teachers will be teaching remotely. Our teachers make our school district the amazing institution that it is. Those of us who moved to Dover for the schools, we're not drawn here for the buildings. We were drawn here because of the education that takes place in those buildings and the teachers who have dedicated their careers to provide it. Employers across the country are resorting to extraordinary, and even if temporary, measures to enable employees with childcare needs to continue working and accommodating employees who need to work remotely due to health issues. And we can as well, and I think we should, and I think that this, that Judy's amendment accomplishes that objective. Thanks, Maggie.
And, and did you have, want to speak as well?
Yes, I, I did. Thank you. So, thank you. I feel like what I want to say kind of encapsulates a lot of, or summarizes a lot of what we've been saying, what y'all have been saying, so thank you very much for your thoughtful statements. In the past few weeks, I've read dozens of emails from and have had hours of conversations with parents, teachers, administrators, students, and even alums from the Dover Sherburne community. Thank you to everyone who took time to share your thoughts, fears, and suggestions. And please know that each and every email was carefully read and every conversation thoughtfully considered. While engaging with the community, a sense of there being an "us" and "them" emerged. During these challenging and uncertain times, we draw strength from our community. All of us who are involved with the Dover Sherburne schools, parents, teachers, staff, administrators, school committee members, we're all in this together. We share a common goal. While we may disagree on the specifics, we all want to do right by our kids. While it remains important to continue to push each other in positive ways and to ask thoughtful questions, doing so in a supportive way raises us all up and creates a stronger, more resilient community. We're all striving toward that elusive goal of doing what's best for our students. This situation is new to all of us, but if we keep that common goal in mind, afford each other a lot of grace, and support each other in our endeavors, our children will benefit. That's it. Thanks, Maggie.
You're welcome. Thank you all. Anything further before we move to the next, Michael?
Yeah, if, Maggie, if I could maybe reserve just a few minutes after our votes to make a comment?
Certainly. Um, all right, we're going to move to the reason why you are all here tonight. At last Tuesday night's joint school committee meeting, there was procedural confusion related to the advanced motion for the Regional School Committee to approve the school reopening model. There was a seconded motion that was neither rescinded nor voted on, and a subsequent seconded motion that was approved. In an abundance of caution, I am proposing that we, the Regional School Committee, consistent with our voted intent of the Regional School Committee last Tuesday night, rectify any irregularity. To do this, I propose that we, A, rescind the opening resolution, the re, I'm going to start that again. A, rescind the reopening resolution passed by the Regional School Committee, and B, to the extent the original seconded motion made at the last meeting is not still procedurally live, remake, discuss, and vote on the original seconded motion that was made on Tuesday. Accordingly, I move to, A, rescind the Regional School Committee's reopening vote made at the joint school committee meeting on August 11, 2020, and B, approve Superintendent Kio's hybrid plan as presented, but with the additional provisions as follows. During the period of the COVID-19 Massachusetts state of emergency and the phased reopening of the Commonwealth, any teacher who falls into a hardship category as defined below will be permitted to teach their in-person classes remotely while students zoom in from school and/or attend the remote academy being created at the middle school. Hardship categories are defined as: One, teachers who provide documentation from their healthcare provider that they are at high risk for COVID-19, as defined by the CDC. You can see the definitions on the CDC at cdc.gov. Coronavirus 2019 need extra precautions, and we will add the link into our minutes. Two, teachers who provide documentation from a healthcare provider of a family member with whom they live that the family member is at high risk for COVID-19, as defined by the CDC. Three, teachers who provide documentation that they are unable to work due to a bona fide need to take leave for childcare for a child whose school or care provider is closed or unavailable for reasons related to COVID-19.
A second?
Michael Jaffe, second. Any discussion? Michael?
Yeah, Maggie, I'd just like to make or suggest a slight technical modification to substitute the words "and amended" for the words "with additional provisions" to clarify that we're amending Superintendent Kio's plan. So that that piece of the resolution would read with this modification to approve the superintendent's hybrid plan as presented and amended as follows.
And just to be clear in this discussion, this vote and the amendment applies to the Regional School Committee and the regional schools, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
I have just another quick clarification, and I'd like to ask those with a lawyer background, I think, on this. Just to clarify, there is a state mandate regarding, Judy, you mentioned this, so maybe you're the one to clarify, a state mandate that require, that allows for teachers to take leave for childcare. Can you just?
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can address that. It's actually in the Families First
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can address that. It's actually in the Families First Coronavirus Response Act that was passed by Congress. And it provides, and the language with regarding, regarding childcare that is in this amendment tracks the language of the federal law. And, and, and so what I, what we've suggested in the amendment is that for those teachers who would be allowed to take leave anyway under the federal law, that instead of taking, taking leave, we accommodate that that need by permitting them to work remotely instead of in-person.
So, so we're suggesting then that they could zoom into their class rather than being out for a period of time and just having the class covered by like a kind of a, a short-term substitute?
Exactly. And, and, and yes, exactly.
So do, do we think that this might act, would be like educationally beneficial? Like if a teacher, say, had to be quarantined and would be out of school and, and on a leave for two weeks and there'd be an unexpected substitute, would this allow the school to say, you know, we, even for the days they're in, we could find a monitor for that classroom, but the teacher would be able to continue to provide instruction, assuming they're not sick, people need to be, so that's what, what that's about?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and the other thing that I, I want to mention on the childcare provision, and Maggie, you may be better able to address this, is that I understand that the Commonwealth is currently looking into requiring school districts who have students who are children of teachers in other districts to be permitted to to have in-school teaching on more than two days a week to enable those parent-teachers to work in-person in their own districts. I don't know the status of that, but I had heard that that might be coming, and, and that will help us as well.
Yeah, I, I would agree about that. I, I know it's still, you know, different districts are handling it in different ways. I, I know where I work in Needham, and any parent who's a public school teacher has been asked if their children, their children can come to school all the days in a hybrid plan. And, you know, folks have asked me, you know, that, that seems not equitable for, you know, other folks who are working folks, and, and I guess I go back to what Lynn said about how corporations are doing this. Corporations are setting up learning pods, you know, so that their employees can go to work and, and maybe participate in these learning pods on days that their kids don't have school. And, and I think that those, those folks, you know, this is a way that, that schools, you know, schools are always saying, schools should be more like corporations. And in this situation, from what I'm seeing, there are lots of places where corporations are leading in terms of responsiveness to employees. And, and I think that's an example of one way where schools can choose to, to lead, and I think that, I hope that they do. Other discussion on the motion on the table?
So Maggie, I want, I do want to discuss in more, in more substance, the, I just have one question about the substance of the motion, but right now we're, the motion is to rescind, right?
It's a one, it's a two-part thing. It's to both rescind Tuesday's vote and to replace it with the vote to accept the plan for hybrid with the amendment as provided by Judy for the regional school committee.
Perfect. Yeah, I, I had a brain cramp. So we have any concern on, on the childcare piece, like what, you know, I, I wanted to talk a little bit more about what we, your, your comment on how employers are handling it makes me think, like, from an employer perspective, an employer doesn't necessarily want their employee working from home with kids running around and distracted by their kids. Like, so, you know, what is, what's our, what's our sort of thought process around that as a general, a general concept?
I mean, as a board, like for me, that gets kind of, us being able to create these structures gets beyond our scope. But, you know, when I see a structure being created, say, by, at the state level, I say, wow, we should cheer that on. Or, or being recommended to us at the state level, but I don't know if as a board we can create that structure. But Michael?
Yeah, Lynn, my, my own perspective is that our teachers are all skilled professionals and that we ought to be holding them large to be doing the best job that they can do in teaching our kids, and sometimes that too is a little bit messy as those of, of us who have been at home and been in work situations at home and had distractions at home. It's imperfect, but that kind of comes with the turf.
Yeah, I agree. And my thought, my thought is that this is, we're not in normal times.
Now, might I just add that, you know, I'd rather have a really great teacher, and I don't know who teaches AP Chem, but I'd really have a real, I'd rather have our really great teacher who teaches AP Chem with their five-year-old child on their lap zooming in than someone who is not qualified to teach chemistry at all, teaching our kids. Not, none of this is good. None of this is, is our first choice. But I think it's a much better choice than the alternative.
I'd just like to really quickly sort of echo a little bit what Michael said. We have amazing professional teachers, and those of us who've been in classrooms, I know I've taught, Kate's taught, Maggie's taught. We know, even in the classroom, there are distractions. It can be messy at times. But if you're professional, then you know how to deal with it, and you can create an amazing educational experience for the students in that class. And I trust that our teachers will do that, whatever the situation is for them.
Any further discussion?
Yep, Kate? I, I wanted to ask a question. Okay. Um, I, I, first of all, I know I'm the one who kind of said, wait, what's happening on Tuesday night? And because by hour four and a half, I, and I was just very, very confused about what was going on. So, you know, having some time to digest all of that and learn more and, you know, hear from parents, it's, it's all been good for me. However, and, you know, as Andrew said, I, I'm a teacher, I'm not a lawyer. And I will say, I, I, as a teacher, as a parent, I, I am fully supportive of our teachers. I echo everything you guys have already said. I'm not going to repeat that. But I am a little confused as to, because if I'm understanding correctly, the three things that you outlined are legal rights of teachers right now during the pandemic. So why do they have to be attached to the motion as opposed to being worked out with a negotiation subcommittee?
So, um, Michael, Michael wants to take it? Your thoughts on that? And then I have some thoughts on that as well. Yep.
Sure. Kate, thanks for the question. For, for me, the, a condition to my approval of the hybrid model is to afford these protections for the teachers without it. And, and if, if we kind of put as a, a condition subsequent, the negotiation of an MOU, there are a number of reasons why an MOU negotiation may not be successful. And then we would end up with a hybrid model in place that at least me, for one, would not have approved in, in the first instance. So I think it is, it's, it's absolutely imperative to kind of staple these together. So there isn't any daylight between the hybrid model and Judy's amendment of a hybrid model that affords these protections.
And then I, I want to add two things, and then I know Anne has an answer as well, wants to speak as well. For me, it's also around timing. You know, the next time that the negotiations subcommittee for the MOU is meeting is, is on August 17th. Folks need to make decisions about what they're going to do, and particularly for folks who might be contemplating, I mean, all of the leaves that we just described in terms of the short-term leaves are, are, for me, no-brainers in terms of being able to, to zoom in, say, on a temporary basis because you're, you're struggling with some of these, these issues. Because for me, that means instruction progresses. That cannot progress with a short-term substitute, you know? I mean, time, as we have all learned, is, is going to be really valuable this, this year. So the short-term issues, for me, where it really needs to happen now is the longer term, folks who might be needing or thinking that they need to ask for a, a leave of absence for the whole year. And what I mean by that is, you know, if somebody's looking at their life situation and they're saying, you know, I, I want to do this, and I can only do it if I can do the zooming in from home. I mean, let's be real, the likelihood that this in-person model is going to go on for an extended period of time is, is kind of slim. I, I mean, I want to say, I want to be optimistic, but it's kind of slim. You know, lots of folks have said, I just want them to get in to meet their teachers, right? And one of the things that happens is, say, we have a teacher who decides they're going to take, they need to take a leave of absence for a whole year. And that means that the school district needs to hire a long-term sub, and for a year-long term sub, you sign a contract with that person. And so what that means is if we get two weeks into school and we need to go to a remote, and people say, okay, well, great, we're going to say goodbye to, you know, enthusiastic new substitute and get our beloved teacher back, the answer is we can't. We signed a contract with that person for the year. And I think those long-term leave of absences are challenging because in some cases they're unpaid, and they don't include, you know, necessarily a provision of benefits. And so this is a life-altering choice that a person would make for a, a way that we might be able to accommodate them in a relatively short, for a relatively small time, given that it's highly likely that we're going to need to all get really good at remote learning sooner rather than later, although I, I really wish that I could say that I'm not saying that, and I, I could believe that this is going to disappear. You know, some politicians have suggested that I, I should believe that this is just going to all go away. But that, that's my reason on why I think it needs to be embedded. Anne, you had a discussion?
No, you covered all my points. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Lynn?
The other, the other issue is that those, the provisions in the amendment are, what we're saying is we want to allow people to work remotely. The legal obligation is to provide a leave of absence. But we're going beyond that, and we're saying, or not beyond, we're saying something different, which is rather than have to take a leave of absence, whether that's paid or unpaid, you can work from home. So it's a whole different arrangement or accommodation than what the law establishes.
Okay, thank you. That, that clears some of that up for me.
Other discussion? Okay, so with that, I'm going to take a roll call vote here. And the votes are yes, no, or abstain, and we need more yeses than nos, just for people who don't generally come to visit us on a regular basis. Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Michael Jaffe?
Michael Jaffe, yes.
Lynn Collins?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Kate Potter?
Kate Potter, yes.
Anne Hovey?
Anne Hovey, yes.
And Maggie Sharon, yes. Okay, moving forward. Because there are additional practical details of this modification to the reopening plan that our, our amendment does not address in detail, I, I would like to move, and also because our motion applies only to the regional school committee, and while we think that's appropriate, because as we said at the beginning, there are paths to remote instruction evident at the elementary schools for folks who can't come in, so there exist some jobs with that already, but we would like to direct, I'd like to move or invite a motion to move to direct our negotiating subcommittee of the regional school committees to seek to negotiate together with the subcommittees, the negotiating team of the Dover Sherburne School, Dover School Committee and the Sherburne School Committee, a memorandum of understanding with the Dover Sherburne Educational Association that incorporates terms that are consistent with this amendment to the hybrid reopening proposal passed by the regional school committee on August 14th, 2020. Do I have such a motion?
So moved?
Okay, Michael Jaffe makes the motion, and Judy, do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Judy Miller, seconds. And, and any discussion? Okay, so just to clarify, you know, one of the things that we talked about in terms of this motion is, is does it belong just in the, in the memorandum of understanding and the negotiations around that, conversations around the impact bargaining? And we do believe it also belongs there, and so this is us sending our negotiation team, which is represented here by Lynn Collins and Kate Potter, to those conversations, really with the intention that these provisions, if they need to be clarified in any way, or also, our resolution or our vote tonight only applies to the hybrid plan. And so we're also interested in making sure that should we have to go to the remote plan, that then the desire for teachers who need to be at home be preserved. You know, we've heard rumors in other towns that, you know, teachers have to march into school to zoom back out to home with their kids. And, and I, I think most of us on this call think we're confused as to why we would definitely want to have that. You know, some, some people want that. You know, I, I, I know some of my colleagues are science teachers, and they, they want to do that, and, and I think that's great. But, um, but it doesn't seem like it should be a condition of work. So that's what we're sending Lynn and Kate to do. So I have this motion. Any other discussion? Anne?
Yeah, thanks. You covered a lot of what I was going to say, but just really quickly, it's not just that this, that the motion covers the hybrid plan. It only covers this vote of the hybrid plan. If we went to remote and then back to hybrid, unless we had an MOU that supported the, what we've just discussed, then they would, the subsequent votes would supersede this current one with its motion. So we need to do that for protections. And frankly, the MOU is where this should happen because then it is a discussion with the teachers and with the school committee, which I think is important. And finally, it also gives the teachers and the school community an opportunity to discuss any other issues, especially as we get closer to the startup school that may arise. And that's the appropriate place for those discussions to take place. It's the vehicle that we have for that to, to occur.
Thank you. Thanks for clarifying on that too. So, I mean, really, it would be our first choice to just do the whole thing that way, but we really are feeling like time is, is a little, yes. Any other discussion? Okay, so I'm going to take a roll call vote. You've all changed order on my screen, so Anne Hovey?
Anne Hovey, yes.
Kate Potter?
Kate Potter, yes.
Lynn Collins?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Michael Jaffe?
Michael Jaffe, yes.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
And Maggie Sharon, yes. Now, before we adjourn, Michael, you wanted to say a couple of words.
Yes, thank you, Maggie. My greatest ongoing concern is the social-emotional wellness of our students. Regardless of whether DS schools are in remote, hybrid, or in-person modes of educational delivery, the breadth and depth of our unpredictable new normal can have profound impacts on our kids. Kate McCarthy and her team, together with the school administrators and educators, are tripling down on their focus on social-emotional wellness. But they can't do it alone, especially when under the best of our present circumstances, hygiene protocols challenge school-based opportunities for peer and student adult interpersonal interactions. In times of crisis, many hunker down and look internally as a natural defense mechanism. I urge our Dover Sherburne, Boston school community to resist this urge and to similarly triple down by looking after each other. Look for ways to facilitate safe out-of-school student interactions. Help organize our homebound college students to safely assist our community. Look out for our neighbors with childcare or other challenges, and find times to connect. It will help our communities, and in turn, in a fractal nature, it will help our students. While I have the floor, I want to thank each of my fellow school committee While I have the floor, I want to thank each of my fellow school committee members for the incredible amount of wisdom, time, passion, and dedication you've put into this process. Proud of all of you, and I am so grateful for your efforts and feel so honored to be working alongside of all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And I, I echo all your sentiments as well. And before I invite a motion to adjourn, I want to say a special thank you to all of the 52 lovely people who came to spend their Friday evening, not Zoom cocktail hour, with us at the regional school committee. Please know that we, we appreciate the time that you have given us this evening. We wish you a safe and healthy, you know, next couple of weeks of the summer. For the educators who are here, try to get outside and do something that is safe and not schooly because we'll certainly be doing plenty of that in the months to come. And we'll, we're going to figure this out together. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Kate Potter, second?
Michael Jaffe, second.
Okay, Michael Jaffe, seconds, and we'll do a roll call vote. Anne?
Anne Hovey, yes.
Judy?
Judy Miller, yes.
Michael?
Michael Jaffe, yes.
Lynn?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Kate?
Kate Potter, yes.
And Maggie Sharon, yes. And with that, we are adjourned. Good evening. Have a great weekend, guys. Thank you for coming to visit us tonight.